All right, welcome everybody to the village board meeting of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Well, everyone, please rise for the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence in the memory of former town councilman Lorain McNeil, who recently passed away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in my nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a rule.
All right, thank you. All right, happy Hanukkah, everybody. As I always do, I will start with introductions of your village board, starting at the far end, your trustee Christopher Graziano. Next to him is trustee Vic Farrelly. Next to him is deputy mayor Tara Burek. To my right is Jessica McLennan, deputy clerk, and I am your mayor Andrew Jacobson. We will jump right into our first public hearing, introductory local law fifteen of twenty twenty-three cannabis. Public hearing is being continued from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to entertain public comments on introductory local law fifteen of twenty twenty-three, amending three-ten, chapter three-ten zoning of the village code to regulate cannabis retail dispensaries and cannabis onsite consumption premises. So I just want to first announce that we receive back from the county the GML, so we'll get that out of the way. And I will open it up to the public. So anyone in the public wishing to speak on cannabis in the first row, second row, third row, second. At the podium, introduce yourself.
I didn't see a microphone. I guess you can hear me?
Yes.
My name is James Flyman. I live in Highland Mills. Have been a resident for fifty-plus years. And I'm also the trustee-elect, which will be on the forthcoming village board, which is one of the reasons I wanted to address the board at this point. One of the things that I would have expected is that the board would put aside business that is not immediately required in the village until the new board is seated. These are important, long-term obligations that the village will see, and I believe that this should be held over until the new board is seated. The local law number fifteen is proposed. There are a number of procedural steps I would like to see. It should have been part of the record, the report of the Orange County Planning Board on the two thirty-nine GML. That law would require a majority plus one vote if they had found any issues with it. That should be available for the public hearing. I'm very concerned about the procedural steps in this because the law for regulation of cannabis is actually controlled by the state. The state made provisions for the village to opt in or not. The problem I find with this proposed local law, amending the zoning, is essentially you have identified a district, the CR, to receive these, and then the series of stipulations about setbacks and separations between a variety of schools, other places of assembly, things of that nature, which is understandable because this is obviously a use that needs to be controlled. But you're doing it in effect by creating a situation where there's no land in the CR district that could comply with all the setback restrictions. Now, something happens in zoning when you do that. Essentially, you have zoned it out of the community. But the state says that the way that you prevent cannabis sales in Woodbury in any time is to opt out. I'm concerned that if the village board takes this step, we are in a situation where we could be liable for another lawsuit. And the record on lawsuits on zoning in the village is pretty dismal. This one could cost us a lot of money. I would suggest that you reconsider the use of the CR district. Identify an area that is in a district where you can separate it from all of the things that you've tried to separate it by using setbacks. For example, the Ivy District, the industrial business district, out by the Squidway, is separated, has good access, and basically can operate without really impacting the citizens of Woodbury. It's not a place for congregation. It would simply be a business in the Ivy District. Again, my concern here is that there is a better planning solution to controlling cannabis sales. But the solution that you take has to be consistent with state law. Otherwise, the village could be liable, and certainly would be the basis for a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the next row? State of name and, Lord, yours.
Hi, my name is Samia Lewis. I am a resident of Orange County. I am currently a card applicant, which I was awarded by lessons through New York State for a recreational dispensary. My company is Big Gas Dispensary. And I see that the town of Woodbury and Central Valley did opt in for cannabis, and I was interested in opening up a dispensary here. I currently am one of the first licensees that was in the state. I should be open with my temporary delivery location inside of the towns of Way beyond there currently by next week. And I did that because early on, Central Valley did not have this zoning permit yet. And I wanted to give it some time. I also wanted to be able to offer any assistance that you guys may need and any clarification and helping to let the community know that this is regulated and it is very safe, and that if we all work together, that it can be very useful. It won't be like, it's not harmful to the community, and that we can all work together. I think this could be a great start to showing the state and the industry how successful cannabis businesses are in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on cannabis?
Hey, Stephen Gargano, Central Valley, they are on the take the opposite side of it, being this utopia. I think that we have, behind us, actually, we can see what happened in New York City with the legalization of cannabis. I printed this up just before I came. This is from August of twenty twenty-three, from the New York City Council themselves. It says, "It's estimated in New York City, home to approximately eight thousand illegal unlicensed smoke shops." Eight thousand. The Woodbury Commons has two hundred and fifty stores in. That's the equivalent of thirty-two Woodbury Commons complexes. New York City, with the largest police force, is unable to shut these illegal pot shops down. They sell gummies, fentanyl-laced products. You think that it's easy. They just call up. They were on, I saw the news, the sheriff's department and the cannabis control board. The cannabis control board has to shut them down. The New York City Sheriff's Department, it takes them three to four visits to shut them down. There are twenty-five thousand restaurants in New York City. What I'm bringing up is that if you could zone anything you want, if you think an illegal pot shop opens up here, you're going to call the state troopers, you're going to call the police, you're going to be dealing with New York State. And they're going to say, "By the way, there's eight thousand down in New York City. Get on the list." So this isn't, you can set it back, you can move it, you can do whatever you want. But at the end of the day, you like the toothpaste out of the bottle, you're not going to be getting it back in. And the other thing, too, is that New York State, after they passed this law, convicts have first right to open up these consumption and shops that sell. There was a lawsuit that happened to get turned over. But if I was a convict in New York State and I wanted to open up my bar, I couldn't get a liquor license. New York State is turning around and opening this stuff up to people that are convicted of drug possession in the past and putting them on the top of the list. And so, but you can't do that at a bar. So what I'm trying to say is that overall, I mean, if you walk down to New York City, Forty-second Street, it smells. People are going to be getting on the bus in Forty-second Street smelling pot. They're going to get off at the Woodbury Commons and smell it. Nothing's going to change. I'm just saying, this is, I don't think any zoning, to me, I think we should go back and make it illegal in this town and not try to use zoning as a way of making it work because anyone can open up an illegal pot shop and you're not going to be able to get rid of it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I say one more thing?
Go ahead.
I have, just so that, you know, I do respect your opinion. This was open, and it was not only open to convicts. It was also awarded to anyone that may have received a ticket, that may have been arrested, anyone who was affected by the law on drugs. This was awarded to family members that were affected by it. So it was just not only awarded to convicts. So it was awarded to more than just convicts. And if it was awarded to convicts, it was awarded to convicts that have changed their life. What they also needed to have was a profitable business for more than two years. I do think that people made mistakes, and then they turned their lives around, and they want to get back to the community, and they would like to help out. Also, I do have some samples in the car that I can show you guys if you would like to see it, where you can see that it is non-smellable. This is very controllable. It's not open to the public. There's so many things that change and so many stigmatisms that have changed. I have no problem with showing you guys. Again, I'm here to help and to help you guys understand how this is not what New York City is. You know, we are able to set our own precedent on what we want cannabis to look like inside of Orange County. And that's why I came here, to be able to help you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Guys? Going once?
My name is Debbie Caldwell of the Fane Hill Hills. I'd like to ask the board, why are we addressing this?
We opted in, probably two boards ago, we opted in to cannabis, so we have no other choice but to create zoning for cannabis now. So we are one of the few municipalities...
To what advantage is this to our community?
Tax benefits. It really was about just the income derived from it at the time.
And no impact on the community, on children and...
Well, that's why we're here now, literally deciding on where this is going to be, the zoning and everything else like that.
It's a terrible thing.
Thank you, Debbie. Go ahead, Thomas.
Hi, how's everybody tonight?
Thomas, we missed you.
I just have one question.
Yes.
Right now, you can't, this section of this so-called town, it's no man's land. Everybody blames it. It's part of Monroe that we have. But who's going to, police? This is where you decide you're going to start allowing them to sell cannabis. When they do it over in Walmart Park Lot, they set up a bus there for months, and nobody wanted to address the issue. All right? Hold on, I'm on Monroe. But you know, there's other problems over in that park lot that nobody wants to issue. I asked them about, before we even started this local law, about the homeless people and so have other members of the community, and the long-term people living in trailers and vans and everything like that. You know, and then now they're at the other end of the town. All right? And trailers, finding where there's going to be a safe regret. They got mobile homes set in the woods there. All right? I mean, is that what we want, this town to turn into a vagrant on the outskirts? Because nobody wants to police it. Nobody says, "Oh, I'm going to take care of that." All right? We got a town police, and Monroe doesn't have a town police. Now, you said at the last meeting that that area of Walmart was part of the town of Monroe, and they police it. And then when I go to the town of Monroe for work, they tell me, "No, that's Woodbury," and they police it. So it's limbo. So until you guys can actually decide who's going to do the enforcement there, this should be all taken. There should not be any more discussion. And until you come up with who's going to provide direction and enforcement, that's mine.
I didn't give you, I know, I didn't give it to you at the meeting in the last session. All right, anyone else? Cannabis going once, going twice. Anyone who's joining us virtually? Speak now, if I could hold your peace. All right. All right, first off, I've got some housekeeping to do. So can I have a motion in a second to declare an act and type it as type-one action? I'm secret. Motion, second. Motion, trustee Graziano, second by deputy mayor Burek. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, can I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I also want to note for the record that we did receive a letter today from Doug and Kathy Carey stating their opposition to the cannabis law. So I just want to enter that in the record. At this time, I cannot, we are going to hold over, we're not going to approve this local law at this meeting. It will be done on the twenty-eighth. The planning board came back with the comments. I don't know if you want to discuss them now or just wait till the twenty-eighth?
I can give a brief summary of that. First, I just want to note when you said that the GML came in, it was a local determination by this board, so no supermajority is required. Secondly, the planning board did issue its report, and the report actually requested that your draft, there were some minor revisions, but your draft said that this would be a permitted use in the LIO district. And the planning board actually felt that it would be better as an overlay district. So the overlay district that they suggested would be basically down Mark and Drive and down thirty-two, but ending at the Woodbury Common entrance. I did prepare for you a redlined version of that if you wanted to consider that. Obviously, you can't consider any of that from tonight.
Because it wasn't on our desk.
So you picked it on the twenty-eighth, but I wanted you to notice the planning board did make a suggestion in that regard.
No. So board members for the next meeting, because this will be held over till the next meeting, you have received from attorney Norton, suggestions from the planning board. So it's up to us to decide whether we pass the law as presented or look towards the planning board suggesting a pre- and overlay district. So we will be back on cannabis on the twenty-eighth. So.
Yes, you have both versions, and they are both on your desk seven days before, which is the requirement.
All right. Moving along. Introductory local law twenty of twenty twenty-three, CR district restaurants. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory local law twenty of twenty twenty-three, amending chapter three-ten zoning of village code to allow for restaurants as permitted use in the corridor or residential CR zoning district. Public notice was printed in the Times-Cellar Record on December seventh, twenty twenty-three. Before opening up to the public, I will recognize that the GML came in, came back from the county, local determination again. And I need a motion in a second to type this as a type-one action and declare as an act as per secret. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We open this up to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this?
My name is Stilton Fireman. I still live in Highland Mills. On this issue, I had looked, basically, at the standards, the bulk standards that you proposed and the district in which you proposed it. There's one property in that district that could possibly meet the requirements of this. This is essentially a spot zoning. It is essential that when you build these zoning changes, that you look to make sure you comply with state law in terms of how you apply zoning. You saw what happened in Monroe when they misapplied zoning. Don't let it happen here. I suggest, number one, every single restaurant that you presently have in town is not performing with respect to these bulk regulations. You need to look at those existing restaurants and fashion this zone so that those restaurants basically fit the model that you're suggesting for future zoning.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this topic? Anyone joining us virtually? All right. Can I have a motion in a second, Ben, to close the public hearing?
Motion, second.
Second. Vic Farrelly with the motion, Tara Burek with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Once again, we cannot adopt this as of yet. We will be adopting it on the meeting of the twenty-eighth. That's all I have on that. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it spot zoning?
No, this is not.
Thank you. Have we not discussed that at length? Have we not discussed that at length?
You did discuss that at length. This is actually a news that's going to be permitted in the entirety of the CR district, and there's properties that do comply with it.
Thank you.
That local law, just so everyone knows, this is about the Hoos restaurant that is looking to open at the old city building spot. So...
That's one of the proposed.
One of the proposed. But that was really, that brought that to our attention.
But it permits restaurants in all the districts.
All the districts, yes.
Just around Orange.
It's very clear. People understand.
Yeah. All right. Introductory local law twenty-one of twenty twenty-three, peeling local laws fourteen, ARB, and ridge preservation, fifteen. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory local law twenty-one of twenty twenty-three, which will become... eighteen. You're repealing village of Woodbury local law fourteen fifteen of twenty twenty-three, related to architectural review board and ridge preservation revisions. Public notice was printed in the Times-Cellar Record on December seventh, twenty twenty-three. Once again, I will recognize that the GML came back from the county as a local determination. And can I have a motion in a second to type this as a type-one action and issue an act? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing, open it to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to speak? Get your head to the podium. Speak. Jesus. You don't have to raise your hand, Joe. Go ahead. You can go to the podium. Just go. Bring a chair.
Same introduction. The, this... The issue that I have with this local law is, number one, you are repealing previous local laws, which I definitely agree with the repeal. Again, it's a question of, in this document, you have replaced pieces of the fire architecture review board, and this law should reauthorize those sections, which, when you repeal, you're adopting, essentially, re-adopting the original regulations. Those need to be coordinated. Once again, it's a question of making the zoning bulletproof. When you adopt local laws, you have a responsibility to ensure that they're entirely consistent with state law and with judicial practice. In part, the reason that I support repealing, in particular, the architectural review board is the state law providing for architectural review requires specifically that there be a case developed that justifies imposing the public police power on people's architectural tastes. It's done in historic districts. In Woodbury, the master plan does call for architectural review, specifically in the hamlet business areas, to provide a coordinated look to reinforce those districts. It does not call for architectural review board on every home, every homeowner, anybody who wants to change their structure. If you were not a homeowner, the village is not a homeowners association. They have, this is beyond the authority without amending the master plan. And I don't believe that anyone who was involved with architectural review would say that this kind of control over the appearance of homes is within the police power of the local authority.
Anyone else listening to speak on local law twenty-one? Anyone joining us virtually? Okay. Yes. Go ahead, Joe.
How are you?
Hey, how are you?
So I would like the residents of Woodbury to get some understanding why this local laws fourteen and fifteen needs to be repealed.
I'm sorry, I was going to...
I don't know. He's gone.
Could you repeat that?
Joe, you still there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Are we doing here?
Can you hear me? Yes. I would ask if the board can explain for the residents of Woodbury that local laws needs to be repealed.
We, well, we did receive, on this summer, as for the board, we did receive a comment letter first from the planning board that said they had no problems with it. We also received a memo from the building inspector, which did discuss why this was originally done, why this was originally adopted. It was really going to be based upon the village hiring a village engineer. Without hiring the village engineer, and I don't want to put words in the building inspector's mouth, I know, but... But without having that position in place, it was all going to call on the building department, and it really looked... He didn't feel that the building department could handle that at the time. That was my understanding as to why they didn't...
Mike Finella, you want to chime in?
Kelly basically hit the nail on the head with that.
Okay.
Well, these laws were barely adopted. That you should be able to see if there was any impact or change, or wasn't this worked out for quite a period of time?
I sent you.
Believe me, okay. I don't know what he said. I think he said he wanted to see if it could be.
Oh, to test, to test it first?
But we don't have the mechanism in the village to handle the calculations for.
Right. Right now, there's nobody in the village.
There would be no testing because then everything would still be referred to the planning board under the current.
Right. Because the building departments wouldn't be able to do the engineer calculations.
So what testing?
So unfortunately, I think at that point, the applications would just be sitting there. And they would have to get a person with planning board. So actually keep them moving until the village has that position there. If you're going to give them the right to.
All right. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? All right. Can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Kelly. Do you want me to, or wait?
Just wait.
Okay. All right. Once again, we will wait to December 28th to adopt the local law. So, there you go. We will push off to the 28th, which is turning out to be another meeting. From Snacks.
Yeah, I have one, one question.
Okay, go for it.
I just have one question on this. If, when they come to rehab the engineer, I have an engineer, can this be revisited?
Sure.
Or once it's repealed, it's repealed and it's done?
Sure. Anything can be revisited. Once we've done, once we've got the mandate, absolutely.
Like this, anything is possible.
Anything is possible. Okay. Offer of dedication portion of Sunny Road. All right. So this public hearing is being held and it takes public comments on proposed dedication of 1.587 acre portion. Portion of Sunny Road to the Village of Woodbury for use and maintenance as a public street. So we had a mistake in the publication of the public hearing. It must be resubmitted to the paper. So what we're going to do is hold over the public hearing to the 28th. So can I have a motion in a second to hold the public hearing over to the 28th?
Hold for a second.
A motion by Trustee Graziano, second by Trustee Ferrelli. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Public comment on agenda items only. So at this time, there is a agenda in the back of the room. Anything on the agenda this evening that anyone wishes to speak on, this will be the time. Going once. Twice. All right. In the straight of business. I have a motion in a second to accept proceeded minutes of the meeting held on November 14, 2023. Motion, second. Okay. Trustee Graziano, Trustee Ferrelli with the second. All in favor? Deputy Clerk Jessica Poppin, will you please read abstract 12?
Abstract 12, page 23241475 through 23241663, in total 795,326,98.
So. Can I have a motion in a second to approve abstract 12 as written?
Motion.
Seconded by Trustee Ferrelli. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I have one escrow to close out. A motion in a second to close our planning board escrow in the amount of $669.93. Motion. Second?
Yeah, second.
I'll second.
You seconded it.
You did?
Losing him. Three times.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Appointment of building department clerk from part-time to full-time. So Melissa Marcello has been working out very well. And I would like to be able to move her to full-time 40 hours a week on January 1, 2024. So can I have a motion in a second to approve increasing building department clerk in this Melissa Marcello to 40 hours a week effective January 1, 2024?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to old business. Revitalization committee, discussion on revitalization committee. So in, back in 2020, the village board voted and approved the formation of revitalization committee under Mayor Tim McGinn as part of the grant received by State Senator Gene Rescoofis. Several months back, the village board suspended operations of this committee. So now I bring it back to the board to discuss how we move forward or do we move against it? So, Trustee Graziano, I'll start with you.
I think that the business is done. We just close it out at this point.
Okay. Trustee Ferrelli?
I can either way with this. I thought the formation of it was good then, at one point. But I think it would need to be structured better for it to continue. And by that, I mean a five or a seven member board pops, with a chair, co-chair, and a secretary. And that would be it, because there's a lot of people coming and going. But if we can't find the volunteers and we can't find the people to keep it going, then I'm okay. We can shut it down.
Trustee here.
I am okay with closing it down.
All right. And that's kind of the vibe I have as well. I think the work of the revitalization committee started with the Valley Avenue there from the circle. Those items have been ordered and received. I really don't see the need to continue from there. So just trying to tie loose ends before the end of the year. So, hearing the board's comments, I have a motion in a second to disband the revitalization committee.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New York Thruway, schedule a public hearing for hardship war throwing request. Petition for a hardship waiver in accordance with Local 5 of 2022 was received on November 22, 2023. Facility is located at 33134 Route 17 in the Village of Woodbury, tax map 225-1-76. They requested a public hearing to be held on January 11, 2023. Question, Attorney Norton. Can we move this from the 11th to the 25th? I don't know how much the 11th should be the reorg meeting. It's going to be long enough as is. So.
Get to have it on the same night as the reorg after work.
I mean, if I can, but.
Yeah, if you have space on your day.
So can I have most in a second to schedule a public hearing for January 11th? I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Liquor license 30-day waiver request for Falkirk Country Club. So, the applicant received a deficiency letter from the state liquor authority regarding liquor license application for Falkirk Country Club. That 30-day notice represented that the applicant for Falkirk Country Club would play live music such as wedding bands, weddings, wedding bands and events, but failed to tip or check off the box that also included recorded music and/or DJ for weddings. The state liquor authority asked that Falkirk include. Okay. I lost my place. The S.O.A. asked that Falkirk send the village of Woodbury amended 30-day notice and asked that the village grant a waiver of the 30 days, essentially granting that the error is not a material one in the village. So I don't think it's a material error at all. So can I have a motion in a second to grant the applicant the waiver that was requested?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. My favorite part of the meeting, when I get to authorize the sign stuff. So authorize mayor to sign installation of remote transaction system at Village Hall. So, with the buildings on, moving into their new building, Village Hall becomes a much quieter place. Safety and security at Village Hall has been a concern for years because there are limited amount of people here in the building. To date, there'll be three clerks actually here at any given time. So the building part moving into Village Hall turned out to be a blessing because I had many more people here, including their staff, their inspectors, and then much more traffic flowing in and out of the building. Now that they had moved into the Osvaldo building, we have to find other means to secure the building and keep our clerks in a safe working environment. So our clerks put their hands together and we came up with this remote transaction system. Literally, the doors are multi-lock in Village Hall here. And everything will be done through a, I guess, a yeah, with a bag teller type transaction, action window with a just a microphone that you can speak back and forth in. So can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor's, to sign the proposal for round security transaction window contract at a cost of $16,514.48?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's getting older. I don't know. So, and I just for the record, just want to note, this was the most fiscally responsible way that secures the building and fulfills all our securities. So. All right. Oh, I voted no. You did? Yes. Okay. Liquor license notification for Who's, 923 Route 32. Notification was received on December 4, 2023 from JMJ Rokeport. Doing business at Who's Restaurant. Are they intention to apply for a liquor license? Correspondence was received from the police department stating they have no objections to the application. At this time, I will direct the village clerk to send a letter to the New York State Liquor Authority stating that the village has no objection to this application.
Yeah. Can I ask a question on this?
Sure.
Isn't this where the saver was?
Yes, sir.
The service be put off until we actually decide whether to change the zoning or not?
That's.
Before we bring the multiple reasons?
That's, that's really up to the applicant himself, right?
Yeah, he can just notify about his intention to apply for a liquor license. That doesn't mean he gets to open or use it until he has any privileges.
All right. It's just a horse thing when you vote whatever.
Kelly, how long do you think we'll get that required?
To get the liquor license from the state? You want me to predict how long it takes?
I mean, it's a few months.
It, it can be, depending on things, it could probably be between three weeks and two to three months. But, but it depends. I mean, it depends on whose desk it is. I can't really do it. It's time for me.
If legally, okay, I just see it as a weird order thing, that's all.
Yeah, I think in this instance, the applicant is applying ahead of time, but I'm not sure that he understands that first the village board. Well, I know he understands that the village board has to change the law because he petitioned for a zone change. But it still has to go through the planning board process. I'm not sure that he understands that. And based on the location of the building, things like that, he's going to need to get an engineer on board to prepare things. He may need to go to the ZVA. There's issues that need to be addressed in his application, so he may have the liquor license if he gets it, but he may not be able to use it.
It's very much a par before the horse. And, but it's his, it's his call, CJ. And he is, and it's expensive. He's going to lay out.
It's not cheap.
Yeah.
I don't know. Just asking.
No.
A weird order thing, just to me.
Okay. Discussion right to enter law. So communication was received by the building inspector, Mike Penella, requesting consideration of the adoption of a right to enter law. Mike Penella, since you have experience with this in your old municipality of Portchester, so why don't you discuss the reasoning and hopefully be able to answer any questions the board may have on this?
All right. So the right of entry, as of right now, we have limited powers to enter somebody's place of residence. The right of entry law will give us some sort of teeth to, with probable cause, be able to enter these, these places. Basically, trying to find SROs, illegal operating businesses out of houses, illegal construction in houses. Basically, we, we would issue a letter, giving them five days to respond to set up a site inspection. If they fail to do that, then we would issue notice of violation, giving them 15 days. If they still fail to do that, and we have probable cause, we can go to court and request a search warrant from the judge. As of right now, we don't have any teeth to try to enter any of these places unless somebody lets us in or the police or fire department is holding the scene. And nine out of 10, that's the only times that we actually find something is when the fire department is there or police department.
Okay. Kelly, Attorney Norton, you want to weigh in?
Sure. On the version of some of the language that the building inspector provided, it actually provides the same thing as what state law currently allows. So it would really be putting it in there to set it forth so that people know. The proposed isn't going to be a warrantless entry. Somebody's not just going to be able to knock on the door and say, you have to let me in. There does need to be probable cause and circumstances. You have to get permission to go into the premises. So this isn't just a knocking and entering type of thing.
And who defines probable cause?
Casey.
There's precedent?
Yeah, there's precedent. In order to do it, that's only in certain circumstances. If, if you go to the door and you knock and somebody says, no, you can't come in, you have to then get an administrative search warrant from the justice court. So once you have that administrative justice, that administrative search warrant, then you can go to the premises. So you can't, again, you can't just knock and enter.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
Is this a common law that municipalities have?
Some have it. Some actually have text in their code that basically provides very, very broad authority to enforcement officers to knock and enter. However, there's been challenges to that that date back to, you know, a long time ago. But recently, there was one, the village of Sea Cliff, I think it's called down in Asko County, that where it's too broad, you obviously, you can't enter. A lot of municipalities don't have this specifically in their code because this is the process under state law. But sometimes it helps to lay that out for property owners to do so that they know when the building inspector tells them something, they know the procedure that he's going to follow and it's set forth.
Christie, any questions?
No, I have any questions to comment on. I'm kind of torn on this one. The reason for this is, I understand some of the issues that's meant to be addressed, but also I don't want to turn, it's not going to be made. But I wouldn't want to turn Woodbury into a police state either and violate people's civil liberties either. So I'm really torn on what I would have ever supported this in the first place. It's just, it's, it's a weird balancing act that you can really violate someone's civil rights, I think. So I think I'm, I'm not comfy with it.
Okay. Dick?
Yeah, I kind of feel the same way. Kelly or Mike, how often does this come up? Where you need to go to a neutral place and you can't get in? Is it every once in a while? Is it a common occurrence? Few and far between?
In my experience, and I'll let Mike talk as well, it probably happens maybe a couple times a year that you can't get in. But again, if you knock on the door and because you think there's a violation that's not dangerous to anybody and they say no, you just go to justice court, you get an administrative search warrant, and then you can go in. If there's something that's an emergency, you need to have the probable cause as, you know, a police officer for it to go along to the property. So I think maybe a couple times a year. And not just in this municipality, but for me generally. But I don't know about Mike.
Mike, you had this in Portchester?
Yes, ma'am. We had it in Portchester, yes.
Frequently did you use this form of entry? I know it's a much bigger municipality, but sure is. Mike?
Mike, can you do that?
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. Can you repeat that?
How frequently did you, how frequently did you use this method of entry versus consent?
In my last municipality, 90%, we gave 90% compliance with just the letter alone. We've had issues where we sometimes, we did go to court and showed probable cause and the judge issued the appropriate warrant. I believe up here, up here probably a handful, we have a handful of complaints that this could be used on. Not a lot in total though, as of, as of yet.
Thank you.
So I am in favor of this. I think it gives Mike the teeth that he mentioned that he needs. It is not something that is going to be used, I think, on a regular basis. But if he is submitting letters to these people and he's getting 90% compliance in Portchester, I think you should have the same thing. Part of the reason why this came up was an illegal floor veteran that Mike has not been able to enter. And they've actually turned a deck into an apartment. So these are not things that I think anybody in this room wants to see in Woodbury, nor should we want to see because it's just a hazard, it's a safety hazard for those that live there. for those that live there and those that surround that house. He has not had any kind of success in gaining entrance to this house, so.
But if it's a life safety issue, can't you gain access?
I don't know that, um, it's, I would say.
Sorry, I didn't mean to keep asking you questions, but.
I don't think it's an issue in circumstance there, but I think if that's the case, then he knows or has some, um, suspect that that's an issue, he certainly can apply with an affidavit or administrative search warrant now to the justice court without, even without this on place. Like I said, this is the process, whether or not it is approved.
Kelly, if we don't approve this law.
It's not a law right now.
It's not a law right now. It's just a discussion. It won't be, it won't be a committee of board in the next.
If, if we don't have it in place. And here is an illegal four bedroom that the mayor mentioned.
I think it's a block fire code violation.
Right, and there's a fire and somebody knocks, gets hurt or killed. There's a liability law. If we don't have this.
If you don't have it in place. Certainly if you knew about it, something should be done. If somebody's gonna sue somebody, they're gonna throw it all at the wall and see if something sticks. So you'd like to be, you'd like to be named. Um, but if, like I said, you don't need this law in place for, and to make an application to the justice court, court administrative search warrant. So hearing about this tonight, maybe that's something, um, I can give Mike a call about and we can work through.
Hang on. All right, so with the board, this is gonna be something that would move forward into new bill board. So it's not something that would be addressed by this board. But, um, I did want a discussion on it and at least have Kelly saw the preliminary work to get it done because she has looked over the state law. Um, Mike's, Mike's example kind of mirrors that.
Right.
So we're not really in violation of anything in terms of that, so. Kelly, why don't you begin?
Okay, I can put something together for the board to consider. Um, it might have provided a good sample, but I think that there's some updates that don't incorporate state law that would be applicable here. So I'll put something together.
Okay, sounds good. All right, uh, finally, on new business. A discussion and formation of village courts. So this is something that we've discussed during some of our meetings about the, the problems of having a, or how, having a village court will assist, say, the building department really with their caseload. Uh, being able to hold these, these hearings during the day here in village hall may make it easier on building inspector Penella and his staff and his crew to be able to handle court cases during the day instead of hanging around and doing it tonight. So I know we've discussed this at various times, but I would like to authorize Attorney, Attorney Norton to begin just to do the research on it. So I don't know if anybody wants to chime in with this. Michael, do you want to add anything on your part?
Um, well, having it in the daytime, it would be more beneficial for the department. Um, whereas, uh, you know, during the day, but we're fully staffed. There's other inspectors that witness things that can attest to these, um, cases. Having it at night, um, my inspectors aren't around. We'd have to keep postponing it until, uh, um, we're able to get an inspector there to testify or if it goes to trial. So I think it'd be easier for everybody, uh, and more efficient if it was during the day.
Anybody on the board with any questions or comments?
Yeah, the only, and, and we spoke about this one of the meetings. The only thing that, a couple of things that I'm concerned with is, just go through is staffing, salaries. But I know Kelly can draft up some kind of a budget or plan that would cover all of that. And then would the revenue, expected revenue would be? And of course, the bottom line, tax pay of course. So I guess really until, I didn't have any questions until I see with that plan.
Yeah, I would need to work with the nurse office on that as well. Um, but yes, and I would have to try and set forth almost like a frozen count. Here's how you do it, frozen count.
Okay, I don't think you would do it though if it's not a tax neutral venture. If it's going to create a tax burden on residents, you're not gonna go through. I mean, that would be silly.
But yeah, that's.
So I think if you could project out what the revenue is currently, right? And how much you'll add to efficiency, cause Mike is saying everything's getting postponed. And then you can throw that revenue back into a reasonable timeframe. I, I think you can do it. I don't, I just don't think you're gonna be the one doing it.
No, I.
She's a lawyer. She would be a tester, right?
Yeah, you would be there.
But it sounds like she just wrote it, so.
Anytime, valid.
I have to get, I have to get information, um, from the clerks and then.
Me?
Justice court.
Sure.
It's very general consulting. And I'm just worried about salaries and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, but you wouldn't do it, just like creating a fire inspector position unless it's a, a, a tax neutral position where you know the revenue is gonna outweigh the expense.
It's not gonna be a weekly.
And we did the calculations for that role and I would imagine you're gonna do the same diligence. I mean, DJ and I won't be here, but we'll be in the public, making sure you do the diligence to make sure it's tax neutral, so don't you worry.
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be.
It's not gonna be a weekly.
I found checking caps.
It's not gonna be a weekly court.
Monthly.
All locked together in one big giant eight-hittering day. He's averaging about five eight-hitters a month. And then a lot of them are getting postponed, but if he's doing them all in one day, that's it. And then take the burden out. Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But also Mike, and, you know, not having to be here at night and waiting for the bill or attempt to be available to assist him. I think that's the bigger issue.
Again, I have to look into it to learn.
Okay.
You got it. Look into it. All right, uh, one last thing. So let me just, cause I forgot to do this on the cannabis, but notifications you received to the village.
Yes, so the notification, uh, the village received several notifications of businesses that are interested in applying for a registration, a permit or a license uh, for cannabis in the village. And under the state law, you have thirty days to respond with any objections, things like that. Um, I did listen over, so if I could, just based on the proposed law that is before you tonight, none of the applications or the notifications that you received are actually for properties that are where you were suggesting that the cannabis facilities be located. Uh, so based on these discussions, if you could make a motion to authorize me to provide an opinion to the state on your behalf, expressing the village's opinion that each application should be denied as the village is considering adopting regulations where it would be appropriate for cannabis usage. Some of the uses are proposed right in residential area rather than commercial.
So can I have a motion in a second for Attorney Kelly Norton to s- submit an opinion to the New York State Cannabis Bureau of Cannabis Regulations, I guess it is? Can I?
Just.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a so moved.
I know.
So moved.
So I have a second, oh, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Done.
Thank you.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, and ends regular business, we now go out to the public for public comment. So starting in the front row. Starting in the second row. Don't have to raise your hands. Go ahead. You're not gonna be raising your hands at the podium, are you?
Maybe.
Maybe.
I have, I have two comments that I'd like to show you. The first one is the right tantrum. I agree with Chris. The answer is you don't have a right tantrum. Only a warrant search is permitted in this country. What this is really about is a modification to your building. You don't call it a right to enter. It's a modification to how you issue citations. You're calling it a right to enter law turns everybody off. The second thing is the formation of village courts. The town budget for the court system is over two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, not including the overhead of space and what it takes to keep that building up. That's an awful lot of fines, which you don't get a hundred percent of. The issue here is how to accommodate the needs of the building department to process these citations. It seems to me the answer is to talk to the town board about getting the hours adjusted for the court that's available to the village.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the second row? Third row.
Uh, Randy Roy, Island Mills. Um, I know the, this is gonna be continued on the twenty-eighth as far as the cannabis public hearing. But, um, one thing, I'm looking at the documents here, one thing that really struck out at me, I, I understand the dispensaries, I don't necessarily agree with it, but we, it was a couple of boards ago, it isn't what it is. The biggest problem is the cannabis onsite consumption. I mean, we're gonna have people indulging in town and then driving through our neighborhoods. You know, I don't wanna smell it. I don't want kids in the library parking lots, you know, getting high. You know, maybe if you mind, you go somewhere else. You know, I want to be able to take my kids through our beautiful town safely without any problems. So is this gonna be a, this could be a, um, uh, 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 a partying on our police department? That we now have to monitor people going in and out of these dispensaries because they're high? I mean, you can get high at your house. I know it's legal, I guess, in the New York street, but for all different kinds of reasons where it's medical or whatever, I, I don't want them on the roads. I don't want them to count on, on the roads. That's a problem. You know what I mean? And it's kinda hard to tell sometimes, cause you can actually smell coming out of the vehicle, but they're leaving a consumption dispensary and then getting in the car, they're going to where they might be gone. They're gonna be coming from all over the place. They could come from the ocean, they could come from the city, they could come from all over the place. You know, we have people coming into our town that we don't know and they're all lost and maybe they don't care, maybe they do. I mean, but I don't want a bunch of intoxicated people behind the wheel in my town. Thank you.
Anyone else in the one, two, three, third row? Fourth row.
Good evening, uh, George Flitgo, changing law here on behalf of Rushmore Estates. Uh, I should have been here on the fourteenth. Couldn't be here on the fourteenth. I had a planning board meeting in town where I had to vote before public hearing come. My presence was not a choice, was my obligation to go there, was an existing client. It was a scheduled meeting, I got notice, uh, the meeting here at three thirteen the day before. I tried to get someone to fill in, couldn't do it, uh, I wrote it up. So in that letter, I requested that you consider extending the consent order that Rushmore currently has in the village. That was discussed at the meeting, it took action. And in the spirit of revisiting something, I would ask that the board revisit that action based on the information that you didn't have at the meeting, that you, that I did send to you yesterday. Uh, actually today. So what that information is? It's chronology of all the actions that has been taken since, uh, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. First level of the mayor and the council. We met to discuss the possibility of settlement, stipulation, consent order, perhaps zoning. We went through a process, we signed a consent order in April of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we received a letter in June that we would not consider zoning. We subsequently had a meeting at here and, uh, November, December, the board did consider a zoning law. It is a complex law. It was finally adopted on, uh, February twenty-third. So in my chronology, that takes up about a page and a half. The rest of the chronology is the effort that Seth made with his architect initially, then with the project engineer, get the plan together, satisfy the requirements from that code, bring it to the board, planning board in this case, and go through the review process. So we periodically had updates that we provided to the board. April and May, June, we submitted the application. At the end of June, July, uh, it was submitted to the building department, actually delivered in October, December. The board, the planning board put it on the O sixteenth agenda. That was great. Unfortunately, that was the last time we appeared until November first. And the reason, and one of the reasons that was unfortunate is that the project engineer couldn't be at the O sixteen E. So we watched the video, we tried to address the issues and concerns. We made a submission, and that submission was made on September twentieth. And we were heard on, uh, November first. We made another submission on November twenty-second. That was after you, uh, took up the debate about the consent order. So we made a submission, we believe, I spoke to the project engineer today, believes everything has been addressed. With the exception of a septic test that has to be done. We agreed to do it, we'll do it, but we've been operating for two years. And what's ironic is there are two sides that are upset at not being on the planning board. One is you guys and one is Seth. We, we were trying to get on the October meetings. At the, uh, October, first October meeting, there were two applications. There were a bunch of applications that had been scheduled, but they were then put on to the next October meeting. And that agenda was full, so we could make either of those meetings. But if you look at the chronology, you will see the efforts that have been made by professionals to deal with the issues and concerns and to address those issues as they could. One of those issues was ESOs. There was a need to get a plan to the ESOs. And May, I believe, we were instructed by the, uh, Kelly that the planning board required that referral to come through the planning board. And I understand that. They wanna know, they want ESOs to know what's in that and they wanted the deal once and done kind of process. So we made a submission, uh, as I said, in, in August. We addressed the ESO issue. The, uh, if you look at the video, discussion as well. The chairman had spoken to Chief Burke and, uh, there's a few things that people want to know and that was basically, uh, the chairman's comment. And then he said, but we want you to submit a plan that is according to what the engineers require us. The engineer required the plan you need to mention, have the attorney template. I want to make sure the fire trucks can go around. Uh, we submitted that plan. We have some more comments in November after meeting with the board. And one, one emphasis, what we were trying to do is get guidance from the board of what they wanted, what they needed, what we should be doing with the application. Having only two opportunities, that guidance was limited. But we did, uh, modify the ESO plan. The board authorized the, uh, engineer to review it. One was completed, to send it on. So the plan was changed and modified. We put turning templates on, uh, the engineer gave us a different turning template. And that process concluded ultimately about the time we made the submission on the twenty-second. But if you recall, before your board in, um, February, you were asked to arrange meeting with building inspector and the ESOs. And I had said before, with them being held, we said, yes, they brought the fire trucks. So we were going through a process to demonstrate fire truck maneuver after the, uh, fire trucks have been up there. And, and again, we're, I'm not criticizing the process. This is the normal process for new development. You wanna make sure new development has all parts in the right places. But unfortunately, we really didn't need to do that. Cause we didn't need to put a template on, we just needed to say the fire trucks have been there to turn around. All of these things are problems in communication and so are our, our responsibility. We should have perhaps updated you more frequently and kept you abreast of what was going on. But we didn't, uh, we didn't take action. I think if you had those facts and the circumstances, and the fact especially that we've only been to the planning board twice, both a schedule and a shooting. both of schedule issues, that was not our responsibility, because we did submit the deadline, that you would have taken that into account. And I hope you would have considered just extending the consent agreement or moving it place. It's, we still need to get some of the planning board, public hearing, and actually what I'm planning there, and that's going to take two months. So if we don't have like consent agreement, we have issues with the building. So I would ask that you visit this issue on the twenty-eighth and make guidance from your attorney. And let us know if there's an issue that we can address, and we can certainly, if you wish, make it one by one. We will come to the meeting and tell you exactly what we've done to prepare plans to respond to issues and concerns in the planning board, and to attend to get on the agenda. I can't think of anything that has on the agenda, and I think that needs to be taken into account. We did optimistically think past three or meetings. Took a while to get the details of the, and you can read what the architect said. It had, in the analysis, April, we would commit. It's a complex process. He asked you to go compliance, we need for a survey. So all these things were delaying us getting the application in, but it was not because we weren't proceeding with diligence. If anything, it was abundance or excess of diligence. To make sure we did the best possible, uh, plan, provided the details of narrative as best we could anticipate without knowing exactly what the board would be requiring of us. And I also want to emphasize, this is a novel application. I've never dealt with valley parking. How do I prove valley parking can meet the needs of the anticipated events? It's, uh, it's a one-off. And it's the same thing with the traffic control. Initially, we, what complicated the traffic comments was that the Ice House Road had been proposed in two thousand twenty for the farm owner. But that's not proposed now. And Ice House Road does not, does not require improvements. And it just became one thing after the other like that. So we, I just wish to emphasize as much as I can, we did proceed with diligence. We did proceed in a timely manner. We made our submissions when we were supposed to. And we want you to consider that and revisit the issue and questions you raised at the meeting on the fourteenth. Had I been there, we would have had that discussion then. And we would have taken action with the information that we provided. So, uh, that's my comment. It was, it was interesting when I look back at the meeting on the, uh, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The comments from the trustees are very important, very instructive. We hope you'll get that spirit again. So thank you very much. If there's any time, uh, any questions, please go ahead. Do you have any questions now that I can answer?
Board have any questions? No, it's not a public hearing again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, George. Uh, anyone else?
Can you, I just have.
Go ahead. What was your name?
Did you ever see, you can have the laws on.
And regarding the Rushmore?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know about the legalities, I really don't. But I can tell you that in going there, I really enjoyed the senior teams that they have there. I would like to see that continue and, and to see maybe you guys help them out, do whatever, do whatever has to be done to be able to continue that kind of stuff. Okay? I mean, we don't have a lot, lot to do with, with the senior stuff. Except graciously, it's all but Rushmore to be able to have these seats, and I really enjoy them. I really do. I, I, like I said, I don't know about the legalities, but I would like to see you try to work again and then have to be able to continue this kind of stuff for us.
And I'll be there Monday coming out.
You bet you do, because I'm waiting on to watch you, you know?
Should I wear this jacket?
No.
I wouldn't.
You need to retire.
Come on, Thomas.
I really do.
That jacket's lighter than you, if that's the case.
Mr. Gag, get to see me my three piece suit the other day.
It was impressed. I realized it fit me pretty good.
Thank you.
She didn't have the bar, though.
No, had to lose a few of these that morning, but anyway. Tomorrow, I'll be there, and I'll even bring the donuts in the car.
Can I let them know that?
You could let them know. Anyone else in the public wishing this week?
Um, how, to uphold the averages of value. Um, just a couple of comments that, you know, building, sort of building inspector. There's private roads in this town that are horrendous for first responders. Everybody's complaining, you know, the little discussion that I know about, uh, not, uh, the Rushmore Estates. I mean, I was there for the first time last weekend. I thought it was fantastic place. Um, but there's other places in this town where, as a first responder, I have trouble responding because of the condition of these existing communities or, you know, little developments, like right off off my street, water plane. And what makes it really bad is there's one kid in there, he's got Hunter syndrome, and it's horrendous to get into the place. And, you know, when Gary was here, Gary used to go by there and take care of it. Gary retired, but it's falling into waste, you know, to the side there. Um, you got big potholes, and it's not conducive to a wheelchair. And, you know, maybe they could set out a letter demanding that the landlord who's from Monroe fix the damn thing again. All right? And like up in Falkirk last night, we went and responded up there. And there's, there's a need for these property staff better signage. It took us a while to find a, a resident up there on top of that hill. I, I mean, I know it's an old sanatorium and stuff, but it needs signage, all right? And I think that's something that our village building department should be looking into. More, uh, better signage and some of these things for our first responders to respond to. Um, and the garbage. You know, like I, like I said before about Walmart, but Mark and Drive, you got the thirty-two just north of here, right by where the Savior Road is going to open, reopen as Woes or whatever, Boos or whatever. Um, drones are garbage too. If certain neighbors can't keep their garbage, you know, why do they throw it out? And, you know, I shouldn't have to pick up, you know, delivery services from our neighbors that they garbage is throwing down Oakland Avenue or from like the, uh, the Moll County corner with the garbage coming down the street because they, I don't know how often they unload their dumpsters. I mean, shouldn't we have pride? I know the state stopped having pride on Route seventeen M from the New York State thruway all the way up to, uh, alley U for Garnett exit, one twenty-two. It's nothing but garbage all the way up on all, both sides of the highway. So maybe, you know, somebody could write a letter to the state or the town on road or, you know, whoever the entities are, all right, that should be maintaining these roads. And if it's all, if it's Omar, give him songs. Give him the songs. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Tom, can you just tell me what was the name of that one road you said?
Autumn, Autumn Lane.
Autumn Lane.
Autumn, I'm sorry.
It's a private road.
Autumn Lane. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Anyone joining us virtually? All right. Moving on to public comments. So Rob, I'll start with you.
I don't want to get into it. Thank you.
Mike Pinella?
I've got nothing. Thank you.
Mickey Phillips, if you're still there.
I'm still here. I have nothing also. Thank you.
All right. There you go, Mickey. Jesse, you ready? All right. Board comment, starting at the end of the table, trustee, uh, Quazina.
I'm going to try this, uh, I have a few things to say, but please bear with me. My throat is not that great. It was that surgery two weeks ago. Couple things. One, I agree with a lot of, some of the island comments tonight, and I am, I voted no unequivocally for cannabis. I mean, I had the update knocked out, and if you put it in front of me again today, I would still vote no. I don't believe the law is here, and I'm still very unhappy with that, but again, that's not for me to decide any further. Second, um, I want to thank everybody who supported us over the last few years. I didn't get a chance to say a lot between the election and now, because again, I was going for surgery, I had a lot on my mind, a lot of different things happening, and with my health. But I want to thank everybody who's supported us over the years, and I really appreciate that. And I'm going to tell you unequivocally, I am not through. I've worked for Woodbury, I've done all kinds of stuff in this town, in the village, since the day I moved in, three years ago, and I'm not finished.
Thank you, CJ.
I will continue to do what I can do to help out people. I will be sitting next to Jimmy, starting January, starting the first January meeting. Um, maybe me, Jimmy, Maria can form a little cheering section together. You know, I, I started out the first few years sitting next to Maria in all the town village meetings, and I, you know, I'm not too proud to go back and, and do the same on that side of the table, but I'm not going away by any stretch of the imagination. I don't know what I'm going to do next, but it will be something that I can help people. This place has been absolutely unbelievably welcoming to my, my, my family and I since we've gotten here over a year ago. Um, and I continuously want to give back, so I'll continue to do what I can do. And I'm going to continue volunteering, the things I'm volunteering, and it's never going to stop. But I just want everybody to know that you will see me again, and I didn't get a chance to kind of say all this last time, because like I said, it's a lot on my mind getting my neck fixed and everything else. So as I'm losing my voice again, thank you, everybody. I appreciate the support over the years, and I will absolutely, hopefully, be here for Woodbury, whatever you guys want. Thank you.
Thank you, CJ. Uh, trustee Brown?
Thank you. I just want to again thank everybody for coming here tonight. And I just want to do a save the date, a little fundraiser coming up on February tenth at Falkirk, the annual heart dance put on by the Woodbury Community Association. That's going to be again held on Saturday, February tenth at Falkirk. So save the date, that's a fun event, and hopefully I'll see a lot of you there. And that's all I have for the time. That's it.
Deputy Mayor Bjork?
I love spirited discussions, as you know. Some comments were made tonight, um, alluding to, uh, the, the fact that we possibly don't do our diligence in passing local laws. And I will tell you that we have the privilege and honor of working with what I consider the best lenders in our county, dare I say, New York. This lady protects our village from everything. She helps us get out on our own way. Um, she's probably, I work with a lot of professionals, and what I do is practicing CPA. And when I tell you that there is no stone left unturned when you work with Kelly and you present laws to her that you would like to see passed. I mean, she was trained under one of the greatest, I think, the county has ever seen, Mr. Rick Golden. And she's carrying on his tradition of diligence, and, and her strong ethical values help us to see what's right and what's wrong. So thank you, Kelly, for everything you've done for us, and it has been an absolute delight and pleasure working alongside you for four years. Um, and I hope that the residents realize what we have in our consultants. We have very strong consultants. Um, we are not easy to work for. We are, um, an inquisitive board, we are an opinionated board. We do our homework. Um, to address Mr. Lithgow's comments about us not being aware of certain things, I can tell you at least four members on this board have watched every planning board meeting and have taken detailed notes. Um, and asked Kelly about certain things that we thought happened that she corrected. So we do our homework. Um, but she keeps us honest, and that is something the residents should know and be, uh, very grateful that we have her in our corner, um, for all of our land use and municipal needs, et cetera. That's all I have. Thank you, Kelly. You're an amazing professional and an amazing woman, and I will want to admire you. So thank you.
I concur with that. I do compare.
She didn't even pay me to say that.
Well, let me start with, uh, my turn. Uh, Maria Hunter could not be here to see that. But she did want to pass on the tree lighting for throwing circle and her thanks to everybody involved with that. So I will just run down the list. Uh, Rob Roy and our highway personnel. Our Highland Mills Fire Company Ladies Auxiliary. So they really came out big for this. They were a big assist to the beautification committee. Uh, volunteers of the Woodbury Fire Department who took time out of their lives to be there for this event. And then actually dropped off Santa Claus, who was played by this evening in the Academy Award-winning presentation of Santa Visits Woodbury by Carmine Mascho Jacoboff. Rernick Alvarez, Ryan Crosby, who threw money at the event. And, uh, Woodbury committed the ambulance. I, of course, want to offer the village boards, thank you to Maria Hunter and the entire beautification community for all they did. And especially, well, I want to make mention of Ryan Vander Kamp, who showed me how to properly turn the lights on there. So not only is it so easy, when you have a program with VCR.
It's called a switch.
Yeah. You say it now, but when you're standing in front of it, and then you've got to get your, your fat tuckus onto the wall, and then look around and taking photos of it to see where the switch is. Anyway, uh, I want, on behalf of the village, just then, Frances Jack for her twenty, twenty-six years of dedicated service to the residents of Woodbury. Uh, she has been, if you've ever had to go into the parks department for a park pass, she has been a dream. She's been a pleasure. She is one of the nicest human beings you're going to meet, and I think it's, uh, you know, all, all, all good things come to an end at some point. So Frances Jack, I want to thank you for the treatment you've given our residents, and thank you, and I wish you the best in your retirement. The only thing I want to just mention is I had a big event this week with passing of my own dog. So I'm not going to get emotional about it here, because I've been doing that the last couple of days. But, um, they are very special for everybody that owns a dog. And I just think my advice to you is don't wait till tomorrow to help somebody, whether it's a loved one or if it's a pet, to just let them know that you care about them, or, or that you love them, or take them for that one last walk or whatever else. So that's my advice to the public at hand. I want to wish everybody a happy Hanukkah. We've got two days left tonight and tomorrow. And we will not see you till after the Christmas holiday, so Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. We'll be here on the twenty-eighth. I've got, I don't know how many public, I don't know how many public hearings, but please, if you're coming, bring snacks.
The hearings are close.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right, but I still got a vote on this stage. I was looking for a simple, nice, easygoing, you know? CJ and Tara's last meeting, and now we're going to be, it's like a typical village board meeting at this board. So with no further business to discuss or comments received, can I have a motion of second to adjourn all meeting?
Motion.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Woodbury, until then, be good to yourselves and each other. Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah. All that happy stuff.